All right, good evening. This is the February 19th, 2025 Cottage Grove City Council Meeting, which I'm calling to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Claussen?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here. Next on our agenda is open forum. This is the opportunity for anybody that wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda. I think there might be some people here. Oh, yep, I'll get you. I don't know if you, did you sign up out there or no? Okay, perfect. So, I was going to mention that we have a sign up out in the, in the entryway, and if you signed up, we'll, we'll start there. But if you're here for the development or anything else that's on the agenda, I will allow for comments later. Okay, you're for the development later? Okay. Yeah, so if you're here for anything on the development, we'll, I will open it up for public comment at that particular point, okay? Anybody else that wasn't going to be here for anything that's on tonight's agenda? All right. I will then go ahead and close open forum, and I'll move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Move the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Thede, second by Councilmember Garza. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This evening, no presentations, which was number six. Number seven is the consent agenda. Council, was there anything that you wanted to pull on consent?
I'd like to pull R.
Okay. Councilman Thede wants to pull R, and I'm going to pull P just for comment. Council, anything else? So, Councilmember Thede, why don't we start with you, which is the Holcomb 2025 mining permit. I think you just want to do some clarification, right?
Yeah, just because there's, there's both the, this permit, that's the 2025 permit, and then there's also been the environmental study. Just to explain the difference between those, and that we're just looking at the 2025 permit, and it really has nothing to do with the environmental that went on.
The backwaters part.
Yeah, backwaters part, yeah.
You want to speak to it?
Yep, Mayor, Councilmember Thede. So, the image before you is showing on the right, or the left-hand side, wholesome's current, that's the proposed mining area for 2025 mining permit. On the right-hand side is the separate area that they are working on with an entirely separate process for expansion of their mining operation in the backwaters of the Mississippi River.
So, in the 2025, they're pretty much staying kind of right in that same area that they were in 2024.
Right. Good. Is that good?
Yep.
All right, thank you for the clarification. And then for the public, what I pulled was P, which is the Minnesota DNR Cooperative Agreement for the Mississippi Dunes Pier, Park Fishing Pier. And I want to acknowledge the fact that our staff, our park staff specifically, does an amazing job of going out there and trying to find funding sources for our parks and our open spaces. And one of the, for those that may or may not remember, we did have a, we tried for a local slot, local option sales tax that did not pass this last November, but that didn't stop the fact that we're going to still go out and, you know, update parks and so on. And the great news is that, I don't even know that we really originally were thinking there was going to be a fishing pier, but the DNR was very excited about this opportunity to get access into the river. And so, our staff has been working different angles and processes, and so what this is doing is authorizing approval for the city to enter into agreement to have that, I guess you'll say, have that fishing pier purchased, paid for by the DNR. So, I thought I'd just mention that, since I know that's exciting as we go forward. So, that was it on the consent. Seeing that there's nothing else, I'll look for a motion to approve consent.
I'll make a motion.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Garza?
I'll second.
And second by Councilmember Claussen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So, if you are here for anything on tonight's consent agenda, all of those items have been approved. All right, number eight is approved dispersment, or eight A's to pay the bills?
Move the bills.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Thede, I'm sorry, Councilmember Olson, and second by Councilmember Claussen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, the next item we have is a public hearing, and this is the public, property tax abatement for a portion of the 2025 A bonds. And Stacy is here from Ellers to walk us through this, so welcome back.
Great, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Nice to see you tonight. As you stated, this is a public hearing on the tax abatement portion of the bonds, which your issuing is about 1.64 million of that. This is our statutory authority in which to pay for those improvements, which are improvements to your irrigation system for the public golf course that you're reimbursing yourself for. The requirement is for us to select parcels that we will abate, the city's portion of property taxes from. So, the parcels that are listed in the public hearing are the Arilla Apartments and a commercial space that's on 95th Avenue. There's no nexus test required for the abating of those parcels, it's just a technicality that we have to have, that we show that the city's portion of taxes will cover the principal amount of the bonds. The public hearing then for you this evening is on granting that tax abatement for this project, finding that the tax abatement equals the principal amount of the bonds, and also that it is in the public interest because it's improving public facilities and services to the residents. So, with that, I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Great. Council, any questions for Stacy at this point? None? Okay. So, seeing none, thank you. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. This is the opportunity, if anybody wants to speak on this item, is welcome to do so at this time.
Hi, Bill.
All right.
I just have one quick question.
Sure.
I'm glad Stacy's here. I just want, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I knew you were going to do it.
Bonnie Madder, 6649 Inskip Avenue, South Cottage Grove. I was just wondering if, if Stacy could just explain how this differs from a property tax levy? Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mayor, councilmembers, essentially, it's, it's no different from a property tax levy, because it's a levy that you're increasing to abate your property taxes to go and put those resources towards something else that you're actually bonding for. So technically, even though it's called a tax abatement, it is a tax levy.
So, I guess maybe, maybe, I'll, I'll say what I think might be the question. So, the question is, is this isn't a tax on top of our already taxed, correct?
Mayor, councilor, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. We weren't adding an extra tax, just we're diverting, if you will, or moving the tax from that area to something specific.
Correct.
Okay. Does that answer it?
It's just a different way of looking at it.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why I was trying to say it, because it wasn't a tax on top of a tax that's already there, so.
But we're reducing the taxes that are coming in that would be used, that's all.
Okay.
It's just a different.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Stacy. Any other, anybody else want to speak on this item?
I do.
Well, I got a public hearing. Okay. So, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and then I'll, I think Councilmember Olson has something.
Don't sit down, Stacy. All right, I appreciate your explanation on how the tax abatement process works, and the fact that it's not an additional tax, it's simply reallocating funds, right? And the comment was made that it reduces our tax that we collect, is that accurate?
No.
Okay, could you explain?
So, Mayor, councilmembers, essentially, you have bonds that you're paying, and you have a portion that you have to use your tax revenues that you get that comes in as part of your overall tax levy. And as stated, it's the same amount that's coming in, you're using that portion to pay the debt service on the bonds. The reality with these bonds is that the intent is that you'll be utilizing revenues from the golf course, so you'll likely be canceling that portion of the levy anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Canceling.
Canceling that portion of the levy.
Canceling that portion of the levy?
Yeah, because it's getting paid off by the golf course.
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council, since we have the public hearing, that, there is a, a motion on the screen before you, if someone wants to take it.
Sure, I'll take it. I would like to make a motion to hold public hearing for.
Nope, we did that.
No.
The second one, sorry.
Adopt the Resolution 2025-018, Resolution of Approving Property Tax Abatements.
All right. So, we have a motion by Councilmember Garza, second by Councilmember Thede. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Stacy, thank you for coming this evening. All right. Ten is bid awards, we haven't done this evening. Eleven is our regular agenda, and we do have one item on our regular agenda tonight, which is the Lockridge zoning amendment and preliminary plat with a bunch of different pieces to this. And so, Samantha, I believe you're going to take this through us here for our senior planner, so welcome.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor, members of the council, this is my first time presenting to you all, so I just wanted to introduce myself, Samantha Pirrit, new senior planner here with the city. So, let's just get myself loaded up here. There we go. All right. All right, so, Polty Homes of Minnesota is requesting approval of a preliminary plat and zoning ordinance amendments, or zoning amendment, sorry, for the proposed Lockridge subdivision. The request encompasses three parcels totaling approximately 72 acres currently zoned ag to agriculture, to change to R4 transitional residential district. The plat request is to plat 99 single-family lots and 84 townhome lots. The townhomes would be in groups of four and six units situated side by side. The property is located south of the Woodbury border, west of Jamaica Avenue, and north of the Waters at Michael's Point development. Outlots A and B of the Waters at Michael's Point are included on preliminary plat documents as there is proposed to be a recreational trail around Lake Robert. At the time of plating the Waters at Michael's Point, Outlot A was retained by the landowner and planned to be dedicated with future development to the north, which is what we are discussing tonight. Outlots B and E were proposed to be deeded to the city. Outlot B continues to be owned by the Woltersdorfs, and Outlot E is currently owned by the city. Outlot B, as noted, will be dedicated to the city during this plating process that we're going through. Some of the members of the council and the mayor may be familiar that multiple development and plat proposals have come forward for this property in the past from various applicants. Challenges to development have included the presence of bedrock and Lake Robert, which have restricted the buildable area. So, the developer has submitted a landscape plan that does meet our code requirements, including the trees and the shrubs, with a buffer that averages about 75 feet along the, along Jamaica Avenue behind the proposed townhomes. This feature will be similar to that at the Kingston Fields Development, which is just south of here on the east side of Jamaica. Additional right-of-way is also included on the plat at the northeast corner of the development to accommodate a future roundabout at the intersection of Military and Jamaica. The developable area was pushed about 150 feet west of Jamaica to meet county standards. The Lake Robert wetland and wetland buffer also impacts the developable area here, and an area of bedrock, which impacts the ability for utility installation and will require some excavation and blasting. Due to all of those restrictions, the applicant has proposed to include a mixture of single-family and townhomes. The R4 transitional residential district is intended to provide these types of transitional areas that allow for that mixing of fam, fam, single-family and townhome units along minor or major collector streets, of which Jamaica Avenue is one. This slide in front of you shows the proposed roundabout in conceptual phase for Jamaica and military intersection. Construction is anticipated in around 2028 for that. As mentioned, the design does require additional right-of-way in the northeast corner of the development. This slide also does show an aerial view of the Jamaica Avenue corridor from the Woodbury border at the north to 70th Street at the south. All right, an eight-foot-wide trail will be constructed on the north and south sides of the new Ravine Parkway extension, and an internal sidewalk will also be constructed in the development. Access to the proposed development will be via Jamaica Avenue from the east. Jamaica was designed to handle approximately 15,000 vehicles per day, and currently, there are approximately 4,200 trips taken per day on Jamaica. At full buildout, the Lockridge Development will add about 1,500 trips per day, so adding the 4,200 and 1,500 for 5,700 is well below that 15,000 that Jamaica was designed to handle. The developer will be responsible for installing right and left turn lanes on Ravine Parkway to access Jamaica, and a northbound left turn lane and southbound right turn lane on Jamaica to access the new Ravine Parkway. The developer will also be required to deposit escrow funds for future construction of the trail along Jamaica Avenue going north of the new Ravine Parkway extension. This section of the trail will not be built until that rebuild of Jamaica happens around in 2028. All right, during our planning commission meeting, there was some discussion on the difference between the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinances. So, just as a reminder for everyone, the comprehensive plan and land use, or the difference is that the comprehensive plan does guide the actions of the community by presenting a vision for the future, as well as the permitted density ranges for each land use type. All land use decisions must be consistent with the comprehensive plan, while the zoning regulations specifically define how land can be used to implement the city's vision found in the comprehensive plan. On this slide, it does show that the comprehensive plan designates the property as low-density residential and parks and open space. The parks and open space will be achieved by the, a proposed park on Outlot G of the Lockridge Development, and that proposed trail around Lake Robert. And the density, the low-density residential will be achieved with the proposed density of 3.2 units per acre. Low-density residential allows for two to four units per acre, as designated in our comprehensive plan. As a comparison for the council, the Summer Valley Development was approved in 2024 with a net density of 3.14 units per acre, and the Graymont Village Development had a net density of 3.47 units per acre, so very similar to this proposal in front of you today. The preliminary plat does not, is not requesting a planned unit development, or PUD, it is intended to meet all of the standards found in the R4 zoning district. Polty Homes will construct the dwellings north of the new Ravine Parkway extension. Lots south of Ravine Parkway will be retained by Rachel Development, with a builder yet to be determined. The developer must also design the site so there is no increase in the 100-year high-water level of Lake Robert. Stormwater from outside the development does flow onto the site, but it will be accommodated by the proposed ponds and storm sewers. Outlot G, as I mentioned before, will be established as a new neighborhood park, which will include play equipment and a shelter and parking lot. The parking lot will be constructed during Phase One of development construction. The timeline for the other amenities is dependent on funding, of course. All right, so kind of getting into the history of the trail going around the Lake Robert. In 2007, the Waters at Michael's Point was approved for a preliminary plat, and at that time, the city was operating under our 2020 comprehensive plan. Let's see, conversations at the time were being had to include the trail around the lake, as seen in the 2007 staff report excerpt on the screen. One section of the report does state that a trail around the Shepherd's Woods Pond, as it was known at the time, was not proposed. However, later, in the same report, it was recommended that a future public trail be constructed around the pond. At that time, the property owner wanted to retain ownership of Outlot A, A which restricted the city's ability to plan for a future trail around the lake. However, the city was, did know that a trail would be planned for construction at the time the land to the north would be developed. Continuing, the final plat for the Waters at Michael's Point was approved in 2011 after a few extensions were approved. At that time, the city was operating under its 2030 comprehensive plan, which then showed the future recreation trail around the lake. Today, we are considering the Lockridge Development under our 2040 comprehensive plan, which also still shows that planned recreation trail around the lake. Just as a few examples of similar trails in Cottage Grove that do get kind of close to some of the dwellings, we have Rolling Meadows, Hawthorne Pines, and the Calarosa Second and Fifth Editions. A couple, few of those are on the screen for you. The trail locations closer to dwellings around the city are the most practical locations to meet the needed trail connections. All right. So, after the planning commission meeting, staff did investigate various trail alternatives, as seen on the screen. We have the blue line, which shows constructing, which is alternative one, constructing a Batumanus Trail on the east, west, and southwest sides of Lake Robert with a boardwalk in the southwest corner. Instead of continuing the trail behind the homes at the Waters at Michael's Point, the trail would continue to the existing trail and sidewalk system on 67th Street Base South. Users would then continue using the sidewalk system there to Jamaica Avenue, which would facilitate a connection to the Lockridge Development and the new park. The green line on the exhibit shows alternative two, which continues the trail on the east, west, and southwest sides of the, of the lake with, instead of running behind the dwellings, would include a boardwalk being installed within the wetland to, to construct the trail that would connect to the east side of the lake. And then the red line shows the approximate location of the trail as it was originally proposed. The original intention of the development was for the blue and red lines to be constructed. During the planning commission meeting, it should be noted, a few of the members did only support construction of the blue option. It should be noted also that construction of boardwalks does come at a cost. Boardwalks can cost up to six times more than asphalt trails per linear foot, and they cannot be maintained year-round since plow trucks cannot drive on the boardwalks. Staff also acknowledges the impacts of the original trail location on the westernmost lot, where the lot would have had a public trail on three sides of the lot. And so, staff has shifted that trail from directly behind that lot, instead to run diagonally from the existing trail stub to the blue trail, as seen. Continuing to discuss the proposed trail, there was a boardwalk proposed on the northwest side of the wetland as well. Staff would prefer to see that this not be a boardwalk in this area, instead have the trail constructed around the wetland within the wetland buffer. The trail around the wetland would avoid directly impacting that wetland, and, as discussed previously, would be a less costly option. No wetland credits would need, be needed to construct the trail on the land around the wetland. The boardwalk on the southwest side of the wetland that I've mentioned a couple times will need to be constructed to avoid negative impacts to the wetland. The alternative here is to obtain wetland credits and permits to fill the wetland and install a Batumanus Trail in that area. All right. This image shows the existing neighborhood of the Waters at Michael's Point with the proposed trail in gray. I will acknowledge that the trail does show behind the westernmost lot, however, that would be situated differently, as discussed earlier. There are some distances in red that show the proposed trail would be no closer than 10 feet from the nearest rear property line. About 16 trees will need to be removed for trail construction, mostly consisting of unwanted species such as ash or boxhelder. The Parks Department does typically remove trees within five feet of a trail, however, the path may be able to be adjusted to save some higher-quality trees. During the planning commission, there was also some discussion about possibly adding some screening to city property or private properties to minimize the visual impact of the trail on these existing residents. Coniferous trees or coniferous shrubs, shrubs could be added behind these lots, either on city property or private property, depending on the distance from the trail. The city and the developer will work with individual property owners on the best options for location of screening. There are some small sections of the trail that are lying in areas that are low-lying, that may be inundated with water for short periods of time, with storms of four inches or more. This is also not uncharacteristic of other trails in the city, such as those at Hamlet Park, Pine Tree Park, and Pine Tree Valley Park. All right. Various personal property has also been added to Outlot A over the years, as allowed by the property owner. The city will not accept Outlot A for public dedication until all personal property is The development is also adjacent to the Shepherd Woods Farm and its wooded trail system. There's currently not a planned trail connection. Hikers may wander through the Shepherd Woods Farm to connect to those trails. At just under one mile long, the trail around the lake will be a great asset to the city of Cottage Grove, and will facilitate a connection to the trails along Jamaica Avenue, Ravine Parkway. And it should also be noted that the city acquired Outlot E at the Waters at Michael's Point in 2012 with the intention of constructing this trail around the lake. All right, and just one last slide about the proposed development for everyone to see. The townhomes will be slab-on-grade. Single-family homes would be a mixture of walkout, split walkout, split lookout, and a full basement. All right. And with that, it is recommended that the council adopt ordinance number 1093 and adopt Resolution 2025-020. Now, we'll stand for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. Council first. Any questions? Councilmember Olson first.
Thank you. Sorry for my voice, everybody, I'm fighting the grudge like about half the public right now in the state of Minnesota, so if you didn't hear what I said, I'll certainly repeat myself. First, I have a question for Corey, as it relates to the slide that we saw that stipulated in one portion of the slide that there would be no trail, and then later on stipulated there would be a trail. So, how do you reconcile that?
Your honor, members of the council, I actually had to read that several times. And as you know, planning reports are not always written precisely, and so while I think the way I would have interpreted that is the, is to insert, which I think makes the most sense, there is no play, trail planned yet, because then in the following paragraph it said, "We do plan to have a trail around the pond."
Right.
"We just don't know when." And then it was followed up in the comp plan with a proposal that there would be trails around the pond. So, this clearly was intended for future.
Yep.
Trail. It was not articulated that it, as well as it could have been in the planner's report, but it just wasn't planned yet, is, is the way, I think the only way that an interpretation makes sense.
And was there any signage that the city put out in the portion of this property that's, that city owned, indicating, you know, future trailway or anything like that? Because when we do road stubs, as an example, we put signage that says this will be a future-through-road, kind of lets people know at some point this will happen. Did we do that with this area? Does anybody know?
No, they did not.
We did not? Okay. Alright. So it was in the comp plan, which maybe 18 people read, but it, it uh, it wasn't signed. That's, that's a little bit of a challenge for me, frankly, if I'm a property owner. The next thing I wanted to ask is, uh, you showed a slide with an alternate route. Would you please go back to that slide? Okay. So it might be the cold medicine. I want to make sure that I understand what I'm looking at. Um, so down in the lower left, I can see there's a trailway that connects with the red area, okay? And that, that red area is the original trailway, right? Proposed trailway?
Correct. Um, the red one and the blue one were originally proposed.
Okay. So the green, which is boardwalk in the wetland, um, I know that that came up in the planning commission meeting too, and, and I think we all know those are incredibly expensive, ve- very difficult, A to put in and B to maintain, so probably doesn't make much sense. And now I got Emily up, so uh-oh. Um, I don't, I don't feel well, so don't beat me up. Um, so what is this blue that, uh, instead of connecting with the red, we've got the blue? What, what is that?
Mayor, Councilmember Olson, um, we still trust your judgment, uh, whatever cold medicine you're on. So, so the blue is identifying a potential option, right? It would connect to uh, the, the sidewalk stub that comes through this, this cul-de-sac. So as Samantha had identified, we recognized that we needed to be cogn- cognizant of uh, that proposed connection heading, I'm gonna call it north-south, right?
So then this would take the traffic away from those backyards? Is that, is that what I'm seeing?
Correct.
Okay.
By connecting to the stub as opposed to running the asphalt trail behind the properties.
Okay. So um, what conversations, if any, have we had with the property owner, the developer, um, staff, et cetera, about this as an option?
As far as extending, connecting the trail to be the sidewalk, it's been a topic of conversation that it is an option.
Okay. Alright. So that could potentially be a compromise to some of the folks who are concerned about traffic in their backyard, is what I'm hearing. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Okay. Just make sure the Benadryl's not talking to me. Um, one other thing I wanted to ask is, um, when you look at this body of water, it's not really like a super awesome body of water. And this might be a Ryan question, but I know that the watershed is gonna have to, you know, change some things in order to move water um, through this property. And with the bedrock, that can be somewhat of a challenge. Um, what are they proposing to do here? I, I saw some of the ponds that were proposed, but um, would they also utilize this body of water as a holding pond, or what is their thought?
Councilmember Olson, Mr. Mayor, so with this development, um, like Sam mentioned, there's several points of water that come in from the Calarosa development to the west, to Woodbury to the north. It's a bit challenging. Um, they do have a series of ponds and larger storm pipes that get that off-site water to this lake. It goes to the lake today. It'll continue to go to the lake in the same fashion. They won't rate control it because that's not a requirement. Developers don't have to take off-site water and slow it down. That's just not the way development happens. Um, their water, this, this property also drains to this lake completely today. So everything goes to Lake Robert. And then the city, in probably about 2021, uh, constructed an outlet. This was always a landlocked lake. There was no way for water to get out. If residents are here from, you know, that butt up that lake, they remember when that lake kept going up and up and up, and the water was in their backyards, and eventually used an emergency overflow to the east. So the outlet's been constructed, so we now can control that 100-year-high water level. Um, and the developer has to meet all the city-state watershed rules for their water, and then they would just simply allow the water to move through their development to the lake. Future developments of Woodbury and the Kemp property would have to do the same rate control that they're doing to make sure they don't negatively impact the lake or the property owners around the lake.
Yeah, you actually read my mind because we do share the pipe with Woodbury. So um, that was, I was gonna ask that question. So I think what I hear you saying is, in the event of a quote-unquote 100-year flood, um, we have uh, planned for enough distribution of overland water, uh, underground using piping that will eliminate the possibility that this water would come up right into the backyards or over the trailway. Does that sound about right?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Olson, so this trail would, if, if the trail were to be built behind the homes, it would go under the, underwater in a 100-year flood, um, which would be expected. At the planning commission, there was discussion about the modeling showing the high water level coming up about six inches. Now, I think that's a little deceiving because there's multiple models and multiple phases of development. I won't get into that, but really this development specifically actually shows about a one-inch increase. And we would continue to work with them to get that to no increase. That six-inch increase was actually based on full development of Woodbury.
I see.
But we would work with Woodbury to make sure that doesn't happen. I think it's, it's, there's a lot that goes into a stormwater model. They're very complicated. And this is a very large watershed.
I'm sure. And you gotta really be precise about the size of your pipe and where you put it and all the rest of it. So, and that did come up at the planning commission meeting. Emily Stevens brought it up. Um, two other things real quick, one you can help with, and that is Jamaica Avenue. Now, uh, oftentimes when we have new development, we will hear, you know, um, Main Street is a collector road and it can handle this many cars and all the rest of it. Um, and while that may technically be true, the reality is there will be a change for uh, people who utilize that road to get to and from wherever they're going. And that change is going to create um, a, a little bit more difficult ability to maybe pull out and take a left, um, which is already hard to do over there. Uh, and, you know, might be a little more difficult for people to cross over. I know we've talked about that before, doing a crosswalk and some different things. So as we're looking forward into the reconstruction of Jamaica Avenue, which has been on the books for quite some time, are we confident that they're gonna go back to the two lanes on each side? And uh, the turn lanes in order to accommodate that additional traffic and hopefully help people uh, who currently live in the development, um, still be able to use that roadway effectively?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Olson. So um, in terms of Jamaica Avenue, I think what, what is really important is, like you said, it is in our CIP, the county CIP for 2028, they do have the RFP out right now to select the consultant. So that's very much moving forward. That's very solidified. Um, in terms of what that road's gonna be, the county will do a full build-out traffic study, and they'll build the road to what it needs to be. In terms of the number of lanes, that doesn't uh, add any convenience for the side roads. That's just making sure you have the right amount of lanes to move the through-traffic.
Sure.
Um, obviously, we did build a four-lane section from 70th through Rosa Sharon Church. That was so preliminary. We didn't want to be shortsighted. For the rest of the road, the county will look very closely at that. It could be what we call a three-lane section with a dedicated left-turn lane, um, because frankly, a, a four-lane could just be way overbuilt and way too costly, which has an impact on city and county, you know, ability to, to build that road. So like I said, they'll do a full build-out traffic model. They will build exactly what they need to build. Um, it will include turn lanes, and it will include a right-turn lane into 67th Street that doesn't exist today. Um, that was brought up at the planning commission, I know as well. That's a new standard, right, that we add those right-turn lanes? They aren't, even though I can have the feeling of I can be rear-ended at a 45-mile-an-hour road, they aren't required. And they're not, they're not a mandate, but it is a, a county standard now, a city standard. So that right-turn lane would be added at that time. This development would build the right and left-turn lanes with the development.
Good, and I think that'll give people some additional comfort. Um, similar to what we had to do down at uh, the golf course, et cetera. You want to give people that sense of security that, you know, when I pull out or pull in, I'm not gonna have somebody right in my, in my trunk. So that's great. Thank you for that. And then the last thing I want to ask, and I'm not sure who wants to take this, is with regard to the screening trees, um, would the intent be to utilize uh, like arborvitae or kind of more of a narrow, taller tree to, to screen? Um, because the, there's not a lot of space there, to be honest with you. Uh, when I went out and looked at the space uh, with a couple of the neighbors over there, um, it's a little tight. So I'm just curious what kind of plant species would be utilized or best to give them that, that sense of security and comfort?
I can speak to that initially. If there's anything that Emily or Sam would like to add, they could. But we would want to use a, a coniferous-type tree so it has the year-round screening. And it is true that it does get, you know, the trail will get closer to those homes. I think what the intent was to work with the developer, with the homeowners, right? If we do want to keep it on private property, it would have to be a smaller tree, which would provide a little less screening. Um, or we could work with them to plant it, you know, right on the back of their property. So you could have more of a standard coniferous tree. So I think that's something we would just work closely with each homeowner on.
And would we still do that for the other homes affected by the trailway if we went with the option that's blue?
Yep, so if, if it was, let's say, just the blue trail, certainly that blue trail is, you know, behind some homes. So I think that's something we, we could look at. I think the focus has been, you know, next to the lake. Because it's, it's, you know, Outlet E was always owned to connect to that cul-de-sac, I think, even with or without the red trail. Um, but that's certainly something we could look at.
Alright. Thank you very much. I'm sorry I took all that time, but I, you know, I know that this has been bandied about for years and years and years and years and years with different plans and different specs and different developers. And um, it feels like this one might be a little more real than the others. So uh, I certainly want to make sure if we do it, we do it right. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Olson. Uh, Councilmember Plauson?
I have nothing to add to uh, this portion, but I do want, want to discuss back and forth with us when we, when the time comes.
Sounds good. Any questions down here at all? Councilmember Thede?
Yeah, just, just one. And I, I do recall seeing, whether it was in the packet or, that there might be a little bit of wiggle room on the uh, the red trail going back there that it, it might be able to, in some spots, be moved a little further from the, from the lots.
Mayor, Councilmember Thede, uh, it's possible that that can adjust a bit here and there, uh, but this trail segment was kind of uh, chosen to preserve as many trees as we could. Um, the intent, as they walked physically this trail corridor was, was with the intention that we could preserve some of the trees with this particular alignment.
Okay. Thanks.
Anybody else? Council?
Sure.
Yeah, Councilmember Garza.
Thank you. Um, so after I went and walked the area and got a sense of what, what it looked like over there and, and how the homes bumped up to the back of there, I started doing some digging, and um, because of what I do for a living, I was able to access a lot of records from 2011 when the listings were first put out there, um, when it was just land and not even the um, homes yet. And in those listings, it stated that there was a future trailway to be brought there. And what I thought was interesting, so in 2011, when these, these plots were first advertised, they were advertised as um, a future trailway to be put there. But then after it got sold, a couple of them were sold in 2011, 2012, they, they, and they were sold as land, they, that verbiage was taken away by whoever purchased the land. So I thought that was interesting that when it was originally proposed and these lots were there, um, this trailway was there in 2011, it was proposed. And the developers then stated that whoever would, would buy that land. But then after it got sold and it started being developed and homes were put on there, it, that mention went away. And what started happening after that, I noticed, um, from it being just a simple plot, a box, um, it turned into lakefront property. And so as 2015 and so on, um, those listings started changing, um, depending on who the listing agent was, and it started advertising it as lakefront property. But in 2011, it was not advertised as lakefront property. So I just thought that was pretty interesting to mention. Um, and that was just looking back at the MLS records of, of the listings and, and the different homes that were sold there. And then while I was out there, I ran into a neighbor that was there as well, and they were shoveling, and they took me on a tour around that area. And they said, when they purchased in 2011, they were told that there would be a walking trail put there. And they thought that um, that idea had gone away because so much time had passed, and so they just thought, well, the developer wasn't able to do that. So I just thought that was interesting, that um, this had been told and people were aware of it, but not everyone was aware. And then anybody that bought after that initial development were sort of, um, not told the truth, I, I guess.
That's a clarification.
Councilmember Thede?
Who, the, 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 the listing agent or whoever that was is, was who's responsible for taking that out, right?
That's what it looks like to me. Um, when I did the digging initially, like I said, uh, when they were initially advertised as lots and land, they were advertised as, um, with this verbiage of a trail, and I, I have it saved on my computer, but that a trail would potentially be put back there. But then, as it got bought by different developers, that line just went away. And then when the houses were actually put on there, the, the listing changed to waterfront property.
So it was a marketing?
Yeah. That's what was, that was, and, and it's interesting because those homes are still paying the same taxes as the rest of the people, so they're not increased for waterfront property, which, that's a notable thing as well. So these are the little things that I found while I was digging. My poor cheer keeps going down.
I have a couple of quick questions, um, or maybe a comment in general. But um, one of the questions, Ryan, on that newer development where that pond is, I'm assuming if I saw right, um, on the main development, that is going to have access for us to get back there, correct?
Yep, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. Any, any of the development ponds, we all have to have a, a city outlot access. So there's requirements on how many based on the size of pond and it's city-owned property to get to them.
And do you know, uh, because this has come up in other developments too, do we know if that, that particular pond is actually gonna hold water?
Yep, that's correct. So the ponds in here do all have to hold water because it's in our wellhead protection area, so they're not allowed to infiltrate. Uh, there might be some filtration cells that, that don't have it, but in general, they do. Um, and you probably bring that up because you've had issues over the years. We, we've made changes to our standards to help address that in some simple but pretty cost-effective ways, like putting actually topsoil down first and the clay liner. So we've been trying to make some, some small changes to help make sure these ponds are actually holding water.
Okay, sounds good. And then on the picture, I don't know if this is for Sam or Emily. On the picture with the blue, the blue trail that you were referencing, the, I mean, our intent all along, I'm assuming, please tell me if I'm wrong, was to go with the red, but the, the, the point is, is that you were saying that, you know, if we decided not to do something in the red, you could do the blue. Is that correct?
Mayor, Council, that's exactly it. We wanted to provide some options.
Okay. The other question I had for you, though, all the, the second question is, all of the land uh, behind these homes will be park property, correct?
Mayor, that's correct.
And so we'll be putting our, our markers or whatever that we normally put in to identify that this was a park?
Yep. As the outlot would be dedicated to the city, we always place those markers on property corners to make it very clear it's park and open space.
Okay. And then, so that means on some of those other slides that you show where there's encroachment of items, those will be removed one way or the other. They'll have to be.
Mayor, Council, yep. Prior to the city accepting that outlot as dedication from the developer, the developer will be responsible to work with those homeowners to get any of those encroachment items off of that outlot.
Okay. And I know we've been having, as Zach is keenly aware, we have these issues in park property all around the city that we require. I mean, we literally, if I recall, one particular situation where somebody had to pick up a slab shed or building and move it off of the, the park property because it was in park property, it was required by law. And so I just, I throw that out there for anybody that has some of the extra stuff back there, no matter what's decided uh, from a trail standpoint. Uh, we can talk more about that individually as a group here in a little bit after we hear from the public. Um, but I just wanted to uh, make sure I was clear on that. Okay. Uh, no other questions at the moment for staff? I know the developers here, does council have any questions for the developer? No? Okay. So um, though we, you did have the public hearing at the, at the planning commission, I definitely uh, appreciate hearing from the public uh, on any of these issues. So what I would ask, I didn't get the, the sheet, so I don't know if everybody signed up on the sheet. Okay. So what we'll do is if you want to speak on this item, I'll just ask that you come up to the podium to state your name and address for the record. Uh, please limit your time to three minutes. Um, and then what we'll do is if there's certain questions that come up, what we like to do in these situations is to have our staff take notes. Um, and then we'll like answer all of it, like at the end. So we could kind of hear, because there might be some of you that have the same question or same comment, so we'll kind of go from there. Um, so at this point, if it's not, I could do this, but it's not a public hearing. But if somebody would like to come up and speak on this topic, they're welcome to do so at this time.
Jason Johnson, 8714 67th Street Course, South Cottage Grove, Mayor, Council. You know, we, uh, we purchased our house, we're, to make it clear where I'm at, I'm off of uh, the block or the E, whatever that, whatever you want to call that. So we back up to that. When my wife and I purchased this property, we did our due diligence. We did notice it's on park property. We started making some phone calls, you know, saying, hey, is this actually gonna have a trail? What's, what is the use of this back here? And we were told, you know, from the city, I can't tell you who, but hey, there was uh, not going to be a trail back there. We're like, hey, this is the perfect. not going to be a trail back there. We're like, hey, this is the perfect home for us, you know, so we purchased it. And it isn't because of the lake. I mean, if you guys, if anybody has spent any time near that lake, it is, it's, it's nothing, it's nothing special, you know, so we didn't buy it for, to look at the lake. We bought it because of the privacy and what we got for the money we paid to purchase that home. With this happening, this really changes everything that we've saved for, worked for, and wanted to have. So that, that trail, even though it is part, part property, um, Cottage Grove property, it's, it's still something that's, you know, we did our, did our research and thought, hey, we were told by the city, I don't know if they looked at the same stuff you did, uh, Garza, but I don't know. Somebody, somebody said it wasn't going to be that, and, uh, now it's changing. So that's really a big kick to, to what we've, we've wanted here. So I ask that people really think about what we're spending the time and money to build the trail around. And what I find interesting about this whole deal is, you know, it's about the development that's going up there, and every, this whole thing's really been focused around a trail, you know, and I get that's part of the development and how to get things paid for. I don't know how it gets paid for. I don't dig in that deep. All I'm asking is to think about, you know, the homes and stuff that you are affecting and the neighborhoods and privacy and the security that we do have, because it is a pretty loop is, uh, it's going to go back through the woods there and, you know, if anybody can get back there. So that's our backyards that butt up to the park property, and we're aware of that, but, you know, just something to think about, and my three minutes are probably up, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there somebody else that would like to speak? Yes, please.
Good evening. Um, I'm Crystal Rogers. Um, my husband Eric and I live in the development, and, um, if you actually could pull up the slide with the housing, because I think it'd be easier to just point it out, I'm a visual person as an optometrist, so. Our house is 8844 67th Street Bay South, so we're the house on the furthest down on the left side here. We're by far impacted the very most of all these homes. Um, we purchased our home in 2021, shortly after COVID and a lot of stress as a, as a business owner in Cottage Grove and trying to survive, um, all of that. We decided that we were interested in putting a swimming pool in our backyard, which originally was supposed to be in our house in Cottage Grove in a different neighborhood. And then all of a sudden, um, found out from a, from a friend of ours that lives in this neighborhood that this, um, house was going up for sale, and so we looked at it and within 48 hours, we had put an offer on it and had a, had a house to move into and had to get ours sold immediately. So doing some research after moving in, um, on the, the lot and where the lines were, we did come across this proposed 2040 comprehensive plan and called the city at that time and asked them, um, you know, is this actually going to happen, that this path here could come up? And they said, I don't know who I spoke to, it was a female, um, and she said, um, no, that land isn't conducive due to flooding that's happened for a trail there, so there's no plans for that. So that was just three years, three years ago, four years ago now. Um, so, I mean, we did know that there was that path that's already kind of started by our driveway there on that south side, southwest side, that there could be a path eventually going through the, the wooded area, but there was no inkling in our minds that there was going to be a path literally within 10 feet of our property line, which is what the proposal is, I think 10 to 15 feet from the start of the path to our property line. So we would be significantly impacted if that red line proposal went in because three sides of our home would be visible. So Eric and I, um, you know, we understand we do have to come to a compromise on things. As a business owner, I've learned that over the years, you've got to compromise on things. We are okay with the path going along our driveway and along, you know, the existing 67th Street Bay South, the usage of, usage of the existing sidewalk. I think the color on the, was blue, if I, if I remember correctly. Um, but we'd really, 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 really ask you to consider, um, the privacy of our home with our children, um, teenagers, and a lot of people coming back and forth on that pathway. I, I know that there's paths in the area and there's other houses that have been developed on paths, and it's not necessarily a bad thing. I think the difference is that we didn't purchase the house knowing that there was going to be a path versus if you do and there's already a path existing there, you, you've accepted that as a home buyer, and that was not something that was on our radar as being, um, in the plans. So I guess I would just ask you to kind of consider the houses that are already there and that have been existing a long time and, and think about it if, if it was your, your own um, property that you'd invested in for, for some time. So thank you for hearing us out and hope you consider that when you guys make your vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Miller, 8860 67th Street Bay South. Um, I have enough to go for about 20 minutes, so it'll be hard cutting it three, but uh, I live right on the lake. Um, I was told directly by the developers. I know who told you or put it in the records who changed the, to say lakefront property. We were told by the realtors, by the developers, that this is lakefront property. We were told there will never be a path. Uh, you can tell by where the trail butt ends are, that's where we were told the path would go. It would come up our street along the park, along the sidewalk and go through. Um, the path directly behind our houses takes away our privacy. We did pay, we do pay more taxes because our houses are worth more because our property, uh, the land we bought cost more. So we are paying more taxes than most other people in the neighborhood. Um, I'm going to skip around. Uh, this is not a destination path. That was sold at the planning commission, that this is a place where everyone in Cottage Grove is going to walk around this lake. You've all walked the lake. It is a swamp. It's covered with lily pads almost the entire summer. So I would say if this is going to be sold as a destination, then the city needs to work on improving the quality of the lake water, removing lily pads, potentially dredging the lake, because it's, I mean, I've, I, you know, I do ice rink on the lake, and gosh, it's probably five, six feet deep at best. Waterfall no longer comes to the lake. We just said when we first moved in in 2011, uh, 2014, uh, there were all kinds of, you know, wood ducks, and I mean, we'd even, we see bald eagles and all that stuff. That stuff is no longer present in the area because the lake is overrun, uh, with lily pads. So I strongly, my preference would be, um, like the Rogers, the original path that we were all sold on was coming out around the, around the, on the sidewalks. Um, you know, the difference between our path and the path in the rest of the community is when they bought their property, it's in their plat, they see where their trails go. When we bought ours, we were told there's never going to be a path here. It just, it destroys our privacy, which is why we live where we live. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Um, Kim Summerland, 8710 67th Street Court, South. A lot of the focus has been on the waters at St. Michael's Point, and just to be clear, it is also impacting our homes that are in the preserve. So right now, our home butts up to the property on Outlet E. But it also has some of the same impact, right? I mean, we have lived there without a trail for over 12 years. And again, as some of, um, our neighbors have alluded to, you know, it's different if you're building a development and putting in the trail and people are buying that knowing it's there. We have bought that and lived without that amenity for, for over a decade. Other concerns that neighbors have brought up too are the privacy and the safety. I mean, the area, and again, all this focus has been on just that portion. There's been no discussion really about how the trail comes around on the west and south sides, which would be more of our property, and how secluded it is out there. And what's the cost, too, to put a path through all of those trees? There's a number of trees. I looked at, um, some of the information provided by the developer, and I have to imagine that's going to be pretty costly and be nice, um, if you are going to make a decision to put that path through that area, that you know exactly what that cost is. Maybe the developer gets credits, but it's still at a cost to the city. It's not like it's free to us as taxpayers. That just means that they're giving us less, maybe it's less for park dedication money or that sort of thing, so, you know, the parks wouldn't take longer to build. Um, another thing that I noticed when I was looking at some of the information is, yes, um, in the comp plan that it indicates that there's a path around the lake, and not that it helps, um, my argument, because I don't really want it to go on the south side of the lake, but alluding, or going back to the, um, planning commission, they talked about wanting to have a loop immediately around the lake. That's not what the comp plan shows. So, I mean, there's, there's alternatives, right? You don't have to follow it per se, and even if you were following it exactly how it shows in the comp plan, that is not immediately around the lake. So, you know, there's other alternatives. I guess I would just ask the Counsel to consider some of those alternatives. You know, maybe the path goes along the north side of the lake and up into the neighborhood and loops around that way. So you can still have a loop, but it's not going through the woods where it's going to be, um, very costly. So, uh, I would just ask that, um, the Counsel really consider and explore other solutions with respect to the established character of our community and be physically responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Bonnie? Oh, we got one more, but you, that's fine.
Mayor, Counsel, Kevin Summerland, 8710 67th Street Court, South. My wife just spoke. She speaks a lot more eloquently than I, so I apologize. Uh, she certainly, uh, addressed all of my concerns as well. One thing I would like to add, or a couple of things, actually, in addition to quite honestly opposing that trail going through the, the back of our lots, not only in the preserve, but certainly here on, uh, Michael's Point as well. And this is a very good alternative, uh, I think, to utilize the, the sidewalk and avoid the backyards of, of those lots at St. Michael's. Unfortunately, there hasn't been an alternative proposed for us on, on the preserve, which I would ask that the, the planning commission look at and bring to you. Um, but also I want to address, uh, the larger proposal and plat. Um, you know, that area that they're looking to put in upwards of 160 homes, I believe it is, 99 single-family, and then the, uh, 84, whatever it was, townhomes. Huge influx of people. Um, those lots are very small. I, it, it really should be, in my opinion, looked at, not, um, just the, the density of it is, is overwhelming in my mind for an area that right now is, is, has been preserved and protected. But with that influx of people, I know they talked about the, the turn lane that would be created into that new development, but I don't know if it was made clear whether or not that turn lane would be extended down into, uh, 67th Street now. So I would, I would ask that they, if that isn't part of the proposal, that that be added as well to accommodate our access onto Jamaica Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else want to talk on the, on your area? Because mine is not related to that.
Bonnie Madder, 6649 Inskip Avenue South, Cottage Grove, Minnesota, 55016. Thank you very much, Mayor and Councilmembers. I just have a few questions, and I think it's more for the developer. Question number one has to do with the blast plan. I know that there's bedrock up there. I don't know for sure where it is. Maybe someone can put up a map when they answer this. I'd like to know how often they will be blasting and how will the, um, how will we be notified up on our end? And, uh, uh, when, you know, when's it going to happen? How often will it happen, et cetera? Where will it happen? Secondly, I'd like to see where the wetland is, and I would strongly oppose any purchase of credits to mitigate that wetland. I would hope that that wetland could be kept. I'd like to know where the two exits are to get in and out of this development, because it's my understanding you require two exits to get in and out. And I don't understand yet, after all the discussion tonight, maybe it doesn't have to happen tonight, and I don't need to know, but where the, which trail are you picking? Or aren't you picking? You're just talking about it. That, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else want to speak at this point?
Good evening. Uh, Tony Cambada, 7515 74th Street South, Cottage Grove. As I look at the possible options for trail, uh, I guess my question is the cost of the boardwalk, right? So the, is the alternative option more expensive? And, you know, would you make similar considerations for any other neighborhood? So, um, I would, I would want, if I was in any given neighborhood, I would want to be treated equally. So then I have to ask, you know, if this was any other neighborhood, would we make an exception for them? Because, you know, if you make an exception now, or for this one, then that sets a precedent. So I, and then there's the cost factor, right? So does the other option, is it less expensive? Because then that might, that's a legitimate reason without making an exception for, you know, aggrieved property owners, that, that's a justifiable reason to go with an alternative plan, I would, I would think. And then lastly is, it, it appears that, you know, whoever owns that land now, prior to that outlot being dedicated, you know, their, their land is being, um, trespassed upon. So, you know, I think while, if I was in this neighborhood, I would be frustrated by this. Uh, you know, I think the, the property owner who currently owns it, you know, if, if they had wanted to, could have you know, made similar, you know, they could already have a trail back there, could be riding dirt bikes back there. So I don't, I don't think the city wanting to put a trail in there, uh, adversely affects these property owners any differently than if the current property owner were to be using, using their land in a legal way. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you. All right. So with that, I'm not sure who wants to, there was some questions, some more just comments, but I don't know who wants to take what piece of it before we talk some more.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll go first with some of the engineering questions, and then I think Emily can cover the density question as well. So in terms of, uh, the cost, or some discussion about the cost of the trails, if we did, um, pick or go with the red alignment, while there certainly is, you know, costs, if you're going to go through a wooded area, there's tree removal, um, that's not unusual or, or different than any other trail that we build. Uh, they cost about, in general, 60 bucks a foot for construction, so if this is 600 feet, you know, you're $30,000, $40,000. So that's your scale, right? But that is the cost to build trails, right? If we want to have trails to use in our town, there's a cost to build them. Nothing here is unusual or different. The boardwalk would be, right? So there's a question of what is that? It's six times more expensive. You're looking at $180,000 to $200,000 just to have that section of trail. You know, any of our boardwalks today really cross, like it crosses Hamlet Pond, right? That's the only way to cross a pond is, is through the boardwalk. So you know, that, it is a very much more costly endeavor, uh, to have that boardwalk in that situation. The other more, I think, specific question regarding, you know, traffic and the turn lanes. So, um, like I mentioned before, the, the turn lanes would be built, that is standard. We can require developers to build turn lanes into their development, which we would do, even though they will be, you know, reconstructed in, in a matter of three years. That's not something that's proposed for 67th Street right now. That's not something we can really force a developer to build a different turn lane at a different intersection down the road, um, because, like I said, the right turn lane, it's, it's, while it certainly has safety benefits, it's not a standard, a mandate, or like a safety requirement. You can go all over Cottage Grove, Woodbury, and, and find 45 mile our roads without the right turn lane because you have the right of way, right? The, unless there's a person in a crosswalk, if you're taking that right turn, you're not waiting for anyone, you're not coming to a stop at an intersection like you would when you're doing a left turn, which is why there is a left turn, and even back then, there was that left turn built into that development. So for 67th Street Bay, it would be in 2028 that a right turn lane is proposed.
But that's why I think I wanted to make sure that that message got across. So there, there is a plan for that, that turn lane, but it will be as part of the reconstruction of Jamaica.
And I did speak with the county project manager and just discussed that I'm speaking correctly, and, and they, they do agree. That is something they, they would plan to have in the scope of that project in 2028.
Okay, thank you.
I'll let Emily speak on the density.
Mayor, Counsel, I just wanted to go back briefly, uh, to where we talked a little bit more about density, and I thought Samantha did a good job, that I thought it should be reiterated. When we look at properties, um, she had a good image in here. When we look at properties, she had a good image in here. It might look a little bit more dense because it's scrunched due to the additional right of way. We've got a large portion of park, right? But when we use the land use density that's outlined in our comprehensive plan, it's important to note that's how we guide our development. That's how we guide the number of units that are permitted on a certain property as a part of development. So, comparing to, you know, a Summer Valley project or Graymont Village project, which is all single-family homes, right? But that density equals out between this project and those other two projects.
Emily, I don't know if this is for you or who it was. I think there was a question about blasting. And who wants to, just, I, I know, we've had this at least one other time in Cottage Grove. It's where I grew up, down at the dead end of Pamlet, so.
For mayor and council, I can speak in general. I don't know if there's really any more details at this time on blasting. Blasting always sounds scary. It is a very common practice to deal with bedrock. We've done it multiple times all over the community, many developments recently, developments in actually much closer proximity, Hamlet Heights, for example. That was down at the dead end of Hamlet Avenue, right next to existing homes, Pine Hill Elementary, all blasting to do the work. We actually did blasting when we put the box covered in under Jamaica with the flume, we call it, right by Renewal by Anderson. So, right next to the glass facility, that was all blasting. There's proximities, right, for homes. I actually, we would work, and the developer would work with the geotechnical engineer, given where the bedrock is, there might not even be notifications needed, because the vibrations that anyone even could feel could likely be further away. Those other projects I mentioned, there was homes within 100 feet of the blasting going on. And actually, blasting is a much lower impact than the other option, which is a hydro hammer where they're banging away all day on that rock. That's actually a more impactful. It doesn't sound as scary as blasting, but blasting is quite often the better, quicker way to go, because it's one impact, and then they're done. So, I guess that, I just, I can't speak to the details of what this will be. That would be further on in the final plat stage, but it's a very common practice.
Okay. Sounds good. I'm trying to think if there was anything else. Oh, do you want to add something?
Yeah. Mayor, council, I had one more note that I wanted to make. There was a question about which trail alignment, per se, this evening is being determined before you, and the plans that are in your staff report as a part of this resolution identify that trail to be behind the homes, that, that red segment that you saw before you. So, I just wanted to make note that is what's in the plans as a part of this development currently.
Okay. Councilmember Olson?
Can you explain the cost differential between the two options? Does, does that number even exist at this point?
Councilmember Olson, is this the difference between a boardwalk and trail, or between the blue?
Oh, between the red and the, and the blue.
I think one thing that's, that's important, unless the city administrator would like to add, but.
Staff, could you go back to the original slide with the aerial photo?
Further back.
With the aerial photo on Michael's Point on 67th Street. Mayor and council, one clarification. As staff has shown you the blue alignment, as some of the residents have indicated, you can see that the concrete sidewalk is in place. That was actually constructed during the Michael's Point development. So, that sidewalk already exists, and it connects out to Jamaica Avenue today. So, as you can see, and I think the resident noted it, where the sidewalk ends at the end of the cul-de-sac where it ties into Outlot E, it was very clear that it was to connect there. The resident was absolutely correct. So, if we go to the other slide that shows the shape of the outlot, you can see the unique shape of Outlot E. You can see how the trail was designed to connect to the blue line. The intent was always for Outlot E to connect via the blue and the red, because you can see we constructed the sidewalk already fully in place. So, the only thing we have to do is connect that stub. As the resident indicated, it caused a lot of hardship for that trail to be immediately adjacent to their side property line. And so, staff is indicating that we would be happy to relocate the trail and find a path more on that angle. But we also recognize that that still may be providing some sightline challenges and lack of privacy. We would be happy to work with that resident to ensure that those trees of their liking are aided to screen their property. So, for clarity, the blue already, 90% already exists and was always intended with the way of the shape of the outlot for it to connect. So, it's interesting, when you look at this exhibit, look at the shape of Outlot E at the water's edge. That is no mistake for that shape to be notched out, because the, the trail was intended for it to go behind those property lines as part of that plat. So, you can see that it was designed to go there. It was just a time until the developer and landowner could come to terms to be able to deed this to the city to facilitate that development. So, the decision before you tonight isn't where, if it's red or blue, the blue already exists and was already always intended to be there. I think the question that you're asking yourself tonight is, is it the red trail? Is it the boardwalk? Is it no red trail? So, I think those are the decisions you have to make tonight. So, I want to be clear, the blue already exists out there.
Yeah. Councilmember Garza.
So, I'm just wondering if the homes that are along the red trail that we are putting it forward, does anyone have a fence that is already built that is outside of their, their property lines? Do there, is there any irrigation that is outside of their property lines that they've already installed?
I don't know about fence. I know somebody had reached out to me that had.
No fences, no.
Irrigation, though, I heard.
One irrigation.
One? Okay.
One irrigation. And, and I ask this because when we bring in people to put up fences and irrigation, all the things, we usually do some type of survey so that we know what our property lines are. And so, I'm just wondering how that happened, that they were even able to get an irrigation outside of their own property line. So, that, that's just a question I just wonder, because I know that's expensive, right? And then with, I see that, you know, we have jungle gyms out there and some docks and those types of things. And even how the dock got there, I'm so puzzled with that, that someone would install a dock without contacting the city to say, hey, is this permissible? So, and that was an expense. So, these are my questions, and I just wonder about that. And because these are homeowners, and they've been there as long as they have, and they put money into these things that they have in their backyard, I want us to, you know, be understanding of that, too, but still with the understanding that if I were to install anything in my yard, I'm going to call you guys to make sure I know if it's okay or not, you know? So, I, you know, these are my thoughts on it. That's all.
Yeah. And I would, my one question, I maybe have for staff on the irrigation. Do we permit for irrigation?
Mayor's members of the council, we do not issue a permit for the irrigation.
That's what I thought. So, they could put it, and that's happened in other, where people have put that, or their irrigation onto the.
Right outside.
Yeah.
And the fencing, though, they wouldn't permit for that, right?
There's no permit.
No, no.
No. So, they would, it's up to them and whoever's doing the fence.
To make sure that they figure out. Okay. Thank you.
Um, in response to Councilmember Garza, when I went out to visit with some of the neighbors out there, I did see one fence for the property with the swimming pool.
Yeah.
But, but it wasn't a large, what I would call a privacy fence or anything like that. It was very nicely manicured, looked great, but it was a lower metal fence.
It appears to be on the lot line. It appears to be by the lot line, not extending beyond it.
No, it's, no, they're not, they're in their own lot line.
Yeah, they're in their own.
But I think they're required to have around. So, you have to have a fence around the wall.
But they did invest in that fence.
Exactly.
Okay. So, we can just talk amongst ourselves, can't we? We don't have to do a motion. Thank you. So, I guess what I'll just throw out there for the, for the council is, yeah, and I think our administrator brought it up fairly succinctly about, you know, the choice. It's funny, because we're here talking about a trail on the south side of a lake while we're putting 100 and something homes on the, on the north part of the property, which frankly, I think some of us on the council have been here for many, many years and seen different reiterations of what's, what was going to be proposed there. I will tell a couple of comments for the, for the homeowners. One is, every development that I have seen come forth from Walter Storfs up to this point had the trail there. Now, I will, I will tell you this. Walter Storfs could have easily cut those pieces out and sold them as part of the property. So, I think somebody made a comment about a, a realtor person or whoever made a comment that these were going to be lakefront properties. And I'm sorry that that happened. I'll just say that, because we try as much as we can to put road extensions. Maybe we'll have to start looking at doing future trail extensions to, to adhere to that. With regards to the red trail, being that the property behind you is, will be, as this development moves forward, will be parkland. So, as I mentioned earlier, because I want to make sure that was very clear, so anything that's back there that's currently there, that you have out there, will have to be removed, one way or the other. The other thing I'm going to share with you, and I've been doing this for a long time as mayor and have seen different developments, I kind of alluded to one on the blasting for my old neighborhood where I grew up. Everybody on our neighborhood thought that road would never go through, and there is homes down there. When I grew up down there, there wasn't a trail directly behind my house where I lived. There is now a trail that goes from the street directly behind the homes at Hamlet Park and works its way around. What will happen in, in your area, there is no way that there is going to be a person from those developments that are going to go walk down to the blue, go through your neighborhood, and then cut back up to go to the trail. They are going to, because it's going to be deemed as park property, they're going to walk behind your house. We've seen it before. We, I can give another example personally for me. Pine Tree Pond Park on the south side of 80th Street. All of the, we never had a trail there. It was kind of a trail, because people made it a trail, and we ended up putting a trail there. I got my phone blown up. People were upset that we were going to put a trail behind their house, and we built, ended up doing it, because it was the right thing to do, from a trail connection around that pond. And after the fact, they literally, don't judge it of them people, and Zach, you were there, were saying it wasn't as bad as we thought. It, it, they liked it. They were actually appreciative they got this access point. So, I know there was also some comments about, you know, possibly crime or something going, you know, within the woods. I would just state, anywhere in our community, we have numerous trails that go through wooded areas. Woodridge Park up there be, I can't remember, what's the, what's the one up above the hill, the development?
Oh, yeah.
It's between Woodridge and above the hill. Yeah. And so, we have trails that go up and through there. I'm just sharing with you that this is going to be unique, having the access around with a new park that's going to be there. It will be more than just your neighborhood. I get it. But I also don't want you to think that if the decision was to not go with the red trail, that people are going to be, aren't going to be walking behind your house, because I guarantee you they will, because they did at Pine Tree, they did at Hamlet, and we ended up putting the trail in. So, it actually got people to stay on the trail and not be wandering into people's yards. So, I just wanted to throw that out there as a comment from me. So, council, any other comments you?
Well, I'm, I have a little, a different opinion from, from the way I think the council's going, but I did walk that area back there, and most, and many people have. And, and the difference here is that there were plans to do the trail back in 2011, and we're now 15 years later. And you can look at all this property on aerial photos, and you look at it on maps, but it's very different when you get out and walk it. There are some great trees back there. They've lived there many years, and, you know, there's been some talk of, you know, wasn't a plan, wasn't, we'll just move on from that. But back in 2011, all this went to the, to the various planning commissions, and there were no objections back then to this, probably because no one lived there. I'm concerned about the removal of a lot of very mature trees that have been back there, and this was not a unanimous decision by the planning commission, and that never happens. I mean, it's very rare, anyway. The neighbors here have offered some alternatives, and I think it's up to us to give that due diligence, and I think that we should consider an alternate route than what was originally planned. I want the whole project, I want the overall project to move forward, but I think we can do something with that trail to appease everybody. Thanks.
Councilmember Olson?
Yeah. So, I appreciate Councilmember Clausen's thoughts. And again, I mentioned I had gone and looked as well. And you're right, it's different looking at a map than it is when you're standing there. So, what would you propose in terms of an alternate or some sort of compromise?
Well, the neighbors brought forward a proposal of, we'll just call it the blue route, and they seem to be, if, if there's going to be a trail, that seems to be the best alternative that they can live with. And I think this, I think the city can, too. So, I would, I would propose that we consider the trail to meet up or connect at the east and west ends of 67th Street.
So, then based on what Jennifer told us, our decision point is tonight, I think what I'm hearing is you are in favor of no red trail. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. That's what I needed. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Diddy?
Yeah. So, I did, I have seen that area back there before. One of the things that, couple, couple lessons learned that I learned a long time ago is, is number one, if you, if it's something important to you and you're calling somebody, like when I have to call Xfinity or somebody like that, and, and get something clarified, to actually find out who you're talking to. I know it's, that was a long time ago, but, you know, you kind of need to do that, because things that are on paper appear to be showing that there's a trail there. And there's, even when I bought my house, it was, it was, it was a spot where the neighbors had actually finished like 10, 10 feet into, into that lot. So, to most people looking at it, it looked like this scraggly, skinny old lot, right? But, so, so they, they did that, though. I mean, for a certain period of time, they enjoyed a little bit bigger lot, right? With the way this development has gone, you know, you guys have, have been able to enjoy some of that, that property for probably over, you know, 10 to 15 years longer than, than what was originally thought that, that might be. But, so, the other thing that I want to just make a point of is that this resolution is a preliminary plat, and it, you know, it, number one, is to get that lockage development moving and the planning associated with that. And like I mentioned before, we, we do have some time to kind of take a look at what kind of different alternatives that, that could be, be done so forth for that trail. But, so, you know, at this point, I'm, I'd be, be probably voting to, to move the resolution forward, but.
Okay. Councilmember Garza?
So, excuse me. Thank you. So, Tony, when you came up and you had some words to say, it made a lot of sense. And I guess I don't know the answer to that question, if we have made exceptions. And so, I'm intrigued to see, because we have so many trails that connect our entire community, and we have existing communities, and then we put, we've trails through them, as you said, and they were established homes. And so, you've had some pushback before from our other community members as well. Have we deviated from that? Or have we made exceptions? Or, like you said, we've put those trails in, and people were happy once they were there. Again, we walked this land, and I, I seen the backyards, and I can understand not wanting to have a trail bumped up to your house. But on the flip side of it, I've walked plenty of trails in Cottage Grove that are backed up to people's fences, no fences, pools, all the things. And, you know, I walk with my daughter, and we feel safe. And so, I've not had any concern of these trails or walking through them. But I'm just wondering if this is something that we normally do. Would we normally deviate or make exceptions this way? Or if there's not something of substantial that could really change this development?
I'll, can I, I'll answer, and then I'll, and maybe staff. Can I, I'll answer and then I'll, and maybe staff will know this better. I am not aware of any. We went in back afterwards where there wasn't a trail there, like Pine Tree and a couple of, Hamlet, the, the ravine thing that runs down from Kingston behind that. So I just, and we've, you know, talked to the develop, or the homeowners such in some of those areas and, you know, kind of guided them along. But, so I'm not aware of any that we've deviated, instead of we're not putting a trail here.
Thank you.
Yep. Our city administration, something you want to add?
Mayor, members of the council, and maybe staff can bring up the image of the northern part of the pond, because I want to make sure we're talking about equity, right? We had talked about that, it was referenced. And staff, oop, there, you went past it. The northern part of the pond, please?
I saw the blue.
There you go. See the green trail there, it says preferred trail route. Where does that trail go? It goes behind the new homes. One, the developer was interested in putting in the purple trail, which A would cost more money, but they were willing to foot the bill. Staff is saying, no, for equity, we're going to put the trail behind the homes, the new homes. So when you think about equity of the neighborhood, that northern portion will have the trail behind the new homes, same as what was intended on the south. Now, mayor and council, you know, as we've been talking here tonight, when you've been here as long as I have, you start remembering a lot of, of different examples, right? I'm sure you guys are, are running through your mind. I remember the time when we got this crazy idea that we were going to build a parking lot at Pine Tree Pond, right on the north side of Eightieth Street. Do you remember that? That was a crazy idea. Who would have thought with that slope that was there that we could actually build a parking lot and we were going to build a trail from Eightieth Street to Indian Boulevard? Do you remember? There were hundreds of properties, and there were numerous connections into those neighborhoods that had never had connections before. Because mayor, as you described it, there were all those footpaths through there, right? And then can you remember when the bulldozer started pushing dirt down through that corridor between Eightieth and Indian? Those residents were in absolute shock as we built that, that trail. And you've mentioned it, mayor, who were some of the first people to reference the use of that trail? It was those very neighbors that had said, we don't want the trail. But yet they were the first ones out there as their kids were learning to ride their bikes without training wheels, they were back on that trail, you saw them walking their dogs, you saw them enjoying the absolute amenity. But here's an interesting thing, the mayor also mentioned this. Zach can tell you stories. When we did this, there was tons of encroachment, and there were hundreds of properties, and I'm not exaggerating. So if you look at an aerial photo between Eightieth and Indian, you'll know there were hundreds of encroachment. Now, at that time, they all had to remove their stuff. The city did not offer to screen their properties, to provide trees, or to accommodate them. So we provided nothing to those residents. Mayor and council, what we are doing tonight is going above and beyond. A, to create equity in the neighborhood, as you see in this northern part. And number two, we are going the extra mile to help ensure that that screening and their privacy is maintained, which we have not provided for hundreds of other residents in our community. So I know that you guys have lived through a lot of trail construction in your day and can remember a lot of those conversations. But we also remember that we are building trails and amenities for the 41,000 people that live here and enjoy those things. And those trails are what make Cottage Grove an amazing recreation destination.
So at this point, council, I don't know if you want to switch it back to the, the two items. So as, as was mentioned, I think, if I'm hearing right, at least, I don't think from a true development standpoint, if you will, that there's really any, any angst from the council as it relates to the development, the only piece that was, whether it was blue, blue or red. And so I guess at this point, this is tied up, or the, the trail itself is tied up in the, in the, the two things that are before us in essence, correct? Well, not the zoning, the preliminary plat would be. Is that, is that correct? Okay. So at this point, from, from, I'm sorry?
Do you want me to make a motion?
Well, yeah, if you want to, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, that's fine.
I would, I would move that we adopt ordinance number 1093 approving the zoning amendment to change the zoning of 72.18 acres from ag2 to agricultural to R4 transitional residential.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Garza. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then we have the second resolution that's there.
I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-020, approving the preliminary plat for a subdivision to be called Lockridge, which will consist of 99 lots for single-family homes and 84 townhome units.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Garza. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede. Any further discussion? Councilmember Olson first, yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, I was, council, I'm just wondering if, can we, is there a way to move this forward without the trail location, or does that muck things up, so to speak? Does that put things, put a wrench in things?
Well, I think what we heard, and I'll let staff bump into this, is that it obviously, the whole development proposal though, is part of what the plan is for the trail. So where they stub everything in from the new development on the preliminary plat, where it's going to come around the lake into our parcel, is all kind of tied together. So that's, that's why it's in here. That's why, that's kind of what I was getting to a little bit earlier, is the first one is, is simple because it's, we're saying the development. The second one has that in there. So we do have a motion and a second. The only, only one, I'm sorry, yeah, Councilmember Olson, something you want to say? The one thing I wanted to mention before the vote, one way or the other, is since we're doing the preliminary plat, at some point, you, you're going to have the, you know, should it pass, you'll, you'll be able to have the conversation with the homeowners out there, looking at tree placement, whether it's on their property, off of their property. The one that has the pool, who's the one that has the pool?
That's Rogers.
The Rogers. You know, also in their particular case, if there's something we can do around the side, even though we're going to take the trail, should this all, one way or the other, we're going to take that trail that way. But if we could do it at that angle, I like that compromise that we did there. But if we could also look at some of the tree situation to see if we can make that happen. I will mention to the homeowners real quick is we have done this before where we have done some plantings on private, or private property. We go, we go in and talk to the homeowners, we did it with the developmental Walmart, we did it with the apartment building along Hardwood, where we'll actually go put trees on property, but we also do it on open space too. So I just want to mention that, that, that is not unique. We've done that before in, in order to help any concerns with screening and such, so.
Can I ask a question? What is the dire need to have that trail like right, literally next to the water on that south side? Is it that, like much of a hill to die on to have that path go on the sidewalk and that security, but from a city standpoint, like why does it still personally?
Yeah, well, I guess what I would share with you is, and again, I've been around for a long time, it's been in the comp plan, and it's always been meant to have a trail that actually goes around a lake or, I know some call it a pond, frankly, I think I'd call it a pond. We don't really have many of these options around our community right now. Eventually, maybe more as we jump across County Road 19 and get out more towards the ravine, there's a lake back there. And so it's, it's a unique feature along with the wooded areas and such like that back there. So it is very unique that we don't have a lot of options in Cottage Grove for residents to be able to go walk in an area that's as beautiful as that area is by. And I know you guys are beautiful, I know the area behind you, I've been over there, I've seen it, I know Councilmember Thede has skeet it behind that area. So it's, it, that's, that's the reason. It's, it's, there's been a plan for it all along. There's, the goal is to connect directly around the lake so you have property. And then, as I mentioned earlier, and I'm very sincere about this, you will have people walking back there if you do not have a trail. They will walk it because I'm just telling you, if it's me and the trail is going to cut this way and I know that that's parkland, I'm going to walk the parkland because I want to be by the water.
Or can I clear out all those trees?
No.
And what would be behind our house though? Because if there's, like right now, it's like there's scrubbing.
Yeah, it would, it would typically be similar to what you see like at Hamlet. There's still going to be some trees back there, but you're going to see the water anywhere that you go around there. So I just wanted to mention that. Okay? Councilmember Olson?
Thank you. With regard to the trees thing, one of the things we have in an ordinance is a tree mitigation ordinance. So whenever a development goes forward, there's an inventory done on all the trees, and they're given a value. Some of that stuff is pretty scrubby, some of it's pretty nice. So they'll all be given a value. And then the intent would be for tree removal to really focus on the not very high value stuff. And then when you plant new stuff, you plant good stuff. And we have a list that our city forester, you know, can share with developers and property owners, et cetera, about this is what we recommend for our urban forest as opposed to what we, what we prefer not to have. You know, ash trees are an obvious answer to, to that because of the Emerald Ash Board, but that's how that works. Mayor, what I was hoping for is maybe Emily or Corey can talk about the difference between preliminary plat and the final plat, and kind of how that process works.
Flip for it. Your honor, members of the council, this is one of the stages. The preliminary plat is obviously something that must pre, is a precursor to the final plat. There can be changes between the preliminary and the final plat. The developer may make changes. Obviously, with some of these conditions, they may have to go back and make changes before you see it as a final plat.
Yep.
This is the public hearing, the planning commission held the public hearing. So there isn't another public hearing, although you are always so kind to open it up to comments from the public. So if this is, still happens to be an unresolved issue, there's always another opportunity to talk about it at the final plat.
Okay, perfect. And I think it's important for the neighbors to know that, you know, their voice will be heard throughout this process to help mitigate any concerns that there may be, et cetera. Ryan, you mentioned that the pond, which I think one of the neighbors talked about, it kind of gets lily pot, or lily pads, and it's, you know, kind of, kind of gross. It's going to get more water in it now because of the overland drainage field is going to become a piped drainage field. Will that have an impact on the quality of the pond?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Olson, in terms of the, the lake itself or the pond, there was reference to dredging the lily pads. It is a public water that is permitted by the DNR, so some of those improvements are not something the city be able to do. This development specifically does have to reduce the phosphorus that goes into the lake.
Less algae, less green stuff.
Yep, so that's the main thing, is developments have to leave it in a better state than, than it was. So that does help, you know, over time, have less algae, things like that. I don't want to make big promises, but they are required to reduce that into the lake.
And I know the watershed district gets involved in this as well, and, you know, there's a lot of science behind it, but I just wanted to ask if it is going to get more water, is it going to be better in general? So thank you for that. That's it from me, mayor.
All right, so we do have a motion and a second before us. Hearing no other discussions, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 2025-020, approving the preliminary plat for a subdivision to be called Lockridge, which will consist of 99 lots for single-family homes and 84 townhome units. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda this evening, we're down to council comments or requests. So I will start down with Councilmember Garza.
Sure. Thank you, mayor. So it looks like we have some fun stuff happening, but I will not steal Strawberry Fest thunder. And I will only talk about our 2025 Easter egg hunt that's coming up on April 12th. That's going to be at the Cottage Grove Ice Arena, and it looks like you can grab your tickets online at, on our city website. So that should be a lot of fun happening in the neighborhood in the next couple of months. And I will pass it on.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Thede?
Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll go ahead and then mention, you know, Strawberry Fest, we had mentioned this last meeting too, that there's a purse bingo on February 22nd fundraiser at River Oaks at 11:00 a.m. Tickets, there's tickets online at strawberryfest.com. And there's also a few Strawberry Fest Ambassador Scholarship Program Candidate Informational Meeting, March 4th at 6:00 p.m. at Carboni's. Again, the ambassadors, they represent the city of Cottage Grove. We, we provide a scholarship for them too. And they go around and, and represent the city at a lot of the different parades and festivals and things of that nature. So, so that's always nice, so. Other than that, I'm good, I think, yeah.
All right. Councilmember Olson?
Thank you.
If you can speak, hopefully.
I'm going to do my best. For those who are not aware, tomorrow night at the Cottage Grove Ice Arena, the Park Boys Hockey Team has a home sectional playoff game. They'll be playing Two Rivers, starts at 7:00. You can get your tickets online if there are any left. You can get your tickets online going through the Ice Arena's website. Last year, I had the opportunity to go to the Creighton Park Playoff Game, and I got to tell you, it was pandemonium. The place was packed. Zach and his entire team, including, you know, Molly and Jordan and everybody else, were working really hard, mopping floors, working the concession stands, making sure that, you know, people were getting taken care of, making sure that the event went as well as could be expected. There were a lot of long lines and, and that happens when the place gets super busy. So if you're going to go, I would encourage you to get there a little early. But if I can shake this nasty cold enough, I got my two tickets, so I'm planning on going. Let's go support our Park Boys Hockey Team. Second year in a row, they've been in a playoff game, and prior to that, Zach, not often, if at all, for like 20 years. So this team is really coming together. Coach Corkish doing a great job, so let's support them. Second thing is, one of my favorite times a year starts February 28th over at River Oaks, and that's our annual fish fry. You can imagine, I don't look like this because I miss many meals. So, you know, definitely get in there and enjoy the opportunity to, you know, connect with your friends and your neighbors, et cetera. River Oaks is a great facility. We've got a, a really good chef and a good service staff there. So get out and enjoy the fish fry, and I will encourage you to make your reservations early. Because if you walk in, you won't find a spot. You, you need to either call the golf course or make your reservations online. And again, that starts on February 28th. Somebody mentioned scholarships earlier. If you have a senior who lives in Cottage Grove from either Park High or Eastridge High School, I would strongly encourage you to let them know that the Cottage Grove Lions Club is giving away five $2,000 scholarships this year. We love to support our local youth, and, you know, their application deadline is April 4th for that, I believe. So please let people know to apply. It was a lot of fun last year standing on stage at Park High School, handing out scholarships to kids who had no idea they won. They just, we called their name and they walked up. Additionally, at our first meeting in March, we will be doing the annual donation here to the Craig Willery Scholarship for Public Safety. Craig unfortunately won't be able to join us this year. He's going to be somewhere in Colorado skiing. He's a big skier. But the Cottage Grove Lions approved the donation of $2,000. My wife and I started this scholarship several years ago when Craig retired, will be making a donation of $1,500. All of these donations go to the Cottage Grove Public Safety Board, and then they choose the winners. I believe last year it was three winners of $1,500 each, and these are free young people from our community who want to go into the world of public safety, whether that means being a police officer, a firefighter, or work in EMS as a medic, as my colleague did here for many, many years. So again, make sure that they go talk to their guidance counselor if that's something they're interested in. We need good people in our public safety departments across the state and across the country. And this scholarship is intended to help people who And this scholarship is intended to help people who are interested in that, you know, maybe get a leg up with books and those kinds of things. And if you're interested in contributing to the Craig Willery Scholarship, you can certainly reach out to me, you can reach out to anybody here at City Hall, I know our public safety team is keenly aware of it, or the Public Safety Board. And with that, mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Fantastic, thank you, Councilmember Olson. Councilmember Claussen?
I have no additional comments.
All right, thank you. So I just have one item I just want to mention, which is kind of exciting, I'm just going to kind of read my little, I'll call it a little bit of statement. It says, "I am honored to have recently filmed the 2025 State of the City speech, highlighting, obviously, some of the key accomplishments from 2024, and also providing an update on where the city is regarding our overall strategic plan, and giving a vision of the city's priorities, both in 2025 and beyond. I will say, no one's speech could ever fully encapsulate all that the city and our community does, but I'm always humbled by the work our staff and our dedicated residents do to make our city a wonderful place to live, work, and play." That video will soon be available, I think it might even be out there tonight, on the city's website at cottagroven.gov backslash State of the City. But I also let you know that there will also be a link in the upcoming edition of the Cottage Grove Reports newsletter, and obviously on social media. So there'll be a variety of ways for you to view it. And again, I want to thank all of our residents, our commissions, our staff, my council colleagues up here, and partners, all the partners, both elected and outside of our city, and obviously the citizens of Cottage Grove, for your dedication to our amazing community. It has been an honor, obviously, to serve alongside all of you here, and I'm absolutely looking forward to our work together in 2025 and beyond. So I just thought I would share that with you, and it is out, I got a chance to view it today. And so hopefully you'll like it, and if there's questions, obviously you can bounce those off myself or one of our council members here. If they can't answer it, I'll try to. So with that, workshop open in the public, we do not have one this evening. 14 of those workshops closed in public, we don't have one this evening. So we are down to adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion by Councilmember Thede, second by Councilmember Garza, they didn't even let you guys talk down in this end.
No.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.